Is absent. And we are to the moment of meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, so council colleagues, Mayor Shore, do we have anybody that we need to remember tonight during our moment of meditation? All right, seeing none, if you would please rise at a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of August 8th.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the minutes as written for August 8th, 2022.
All right, there's a motion down the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations. Our first one is on Z2 of 2022.
All right, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us, I'm sorry, is Z2 2022, 3220, and 3330, West Miller Road, a rezoning from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to R6B Urban Residential. They are proposing, and both of them are number one and number two, both of them are proposing to, the lots have been purchased, and they want to put duplexes up. Our zoning and planning, Ms. Statuick has said it is consistent with the surrounding area. There are duplexes on Miller Road and in that same area. So I don't know if we have the person here who is going to do a presentation on that. Excuse me. Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, how are you? Please come up and answer some questions.
Sure.
You can come down here to the well down here. Just kind of give us an overview of what you're planning. I know right there.
So actually, Ray, if you want to take a seat right here.
Yeah, and so you, I know you talked about it a little bit in development and planning, and talked about your vision and what you've done around town, but if you can kind of just give a brief overview of your proposal for both of these, I'd really appreciate it.
And we're going to need you to turn the, actually turn the mic on.
Hit the, down at the button.
Yep, hit the button.
Is it green?
Once the green light comes on, it's live. Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, awesome.
So, yeah, so I'm working on the rezoning, obviously. What I've usually do in the Lancing area is I've been building new homes, you know, here in the Lancing area. I think we have nine up as of now, and we have some other properties that we own in Lancing that I would like to build duplexes, you know, and the areas call for the area. I'm not, I wouldn't want to do something that doesn't fit in the neighborhood. So I'm not, this is, obviously for profit because I own a business, but also it's more of a long-term investment. I've also, I've invested my whole business here in Lancing, so I, my business is in Lancing, I live in Lancing, so I'm just trying to improve the area. You know, the properties have been sitting for quite a while, all the lots that I've bought from the, from the land bank in the city, so, but yeah, I think the areas call for duplexes, you know, there's apartments in the area, there are duplexes in the area, so it fits, it fits the area well, fits the neighborhood.
Are there any questions?
All right, do we have, sorry, other questions or comments? Vice President Wood.
Are either of these conditional zoning?
They both are.
Okay. Could you please explain what the conditional zoning is for them?
Sure, and so, the conditional zoning actually proposed by the applicant is so that there cannot be on any parcel, whether that be on Miller or Aurelius, there can't be anything built beyond a single-family home or a duplex.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Are there other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilwoman Spitzley, on number three.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a public hearing tonight on a payment in lieu of taxes for the Stadium North multifamily lots at 500 North Cedar, and also, number four, a payment in lieu of taxes for Stadium North Senior Lofts, 500 North Cedar Street. Mr. Swagarhar, did I do it good? All right, Kiv, you want to come up here and, and Barb, I'm sorry, Barb, I should have asked you up the last time as well, I apologize. This is my new role, I wasn't, I just got this at the, you know, I'm like the bridesmaid, and now I'm the bride, so I don't know how to act, so, so please. Barb.
Yes, I think what we're wanting to hear, number one, make sure the mic's on.
It is.
But in terms of, so, you know, we've obviously done some things with regards to the property to allow for this development. We do know that originally, earlier this year, as a matter of fact, the particular, this particular developer moved forward with a 10% request, and that was obviously accepted by the city, endorsed by the administration, and now what we understand is that they are requesting actually a 7% pilot due to rising costs in terms of construction materials.
Rising costs, that's correct.
So if you could talk about that, we'd appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely. I'm just going to give you a brief overview, and then I'll turn it over. So it's true, they have a 10% pilot that was granted to them, and they do have their Lytec reservation for these two developments. There's two developments. There's the multifamily development, which was, is 66 units, and then there's the senior development as well, which is 66 units. They're asking for a 7% pilot at this time for 35 years, and each of these will provide 66 units of safe, healthy, affordable housing with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and so, due to increased construction costs and also increased financing costs, the project is not feasible with a 10% pilot at this time, and hence the request for a 7% pilot. The 7% pilot allows the developer to increase construction financing, and along with that increase in construction financing, they will be investing a significant amount of their developer fee into the project to make it a viable project. And I just want to say right now that this parcel is, there's two parcels, actually, and together they're generating just over $27,000 a year in property taxes. With the 7% pilot, these developments will be generating almost $75,000 worth of revenue for the city each year. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over.
And before you, before you start your presentation, I just wanted to follow up. When we were in development and planning, one of the things that we had asked you, or what I had asked, was for a breakdown on taxes now versus taxes, and I think you've said, you just mentioned that, but if you can just kind of reiterate that so that council knows what the taxes are now, what the taxes will be once completion, and then the taxes with the 7% pilot, if you don't mind. Thank you, welcome.
Yes, thanks for having me. If I could just stop you guys for a minute, and I appreciate you being here, and certainly appreciate, you moving forward with this development, I was supportive, supportive of this in the past, and obviously we're vetting now the 7%, so I hope to be able to be supportive now. But we also have to be frank, in that with this development, there's going to be increased costs to the city, with regards to public services, with regards to police, with regards to fire, with regards to code, with regards to, so although we are seeing an increase in taxes on an annual basis, we are going to see an increase with regards to our costs to actually service this building, the way the people that live within these two buildings deserve to be serviced. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, everyone, for your time. Staff, mayor, council, we're greatly appreciate your time and excited about the development. As many of you may know, we started this effort over a couple of years ago, as we applied for funding through the state for a mixed-income, multi-generational housing development, and I do have about a five or six-page packet that hopefully is up in front of you. We'll start with the site. Everyone's probably familiar with the area between Larch and Cedar, and between Saginaw and Chia Wasi. We're about mid-block, just a block north of the Lansing Brewing Company, on what right now is a basically vacant lot with a pretty worn-out building and a bunch of golf carts on it right now, and they're doing commercial leasing there of those carts. The site is also very complicated, and it is a brownfield, and there is a very big mess under the ground. In fact, that brownfield is contaminating one of your water wells as it stands today, too. So I do want to say is while our benefit here is creating new affordable housing for your population, in the process, we're going to be able to do a lot of cleanup on-site and improve your systems substantially, and the quality and health of those systems along the way. Just real quick, a little background on us, we have been doing housing for almost 30 years now. We've developed, owned, and managed a portfolio of upwards of 10,000 units. We've grown into 16 states. We've been in Michigan for about 15, 16 years. Nearest to you, we just completed a development up in Grand Rapids, where it has been successful at least in under two months there in Grand Rapids. Grand Rapids offered a 1.5% pilot, just to give reference. Additionally, we had done a development in Jackson, Francis Senior Lofts. That development is completed about two years ago. Started to notice the inflation that we're seeing in the world right at the tail end of this development, and therein, Jackson, they offer 6% pilots. Any one of these developments, this is, we apply to the state, there's 10 points available for a pilot, and pilots are there to assist in the development of affordable housing. We are able to provide a substantially below-market rent to the residents of your community. The whole goal is to improve their quality of life, allow them more money to spend and grow and empower themselves, and also at the end of life, as folks retire and worked off fixed incomes, they very easily meet these income definitions, and we're able to provide a product and a housing option that is of superior quality of anything that's out there, and we're able to provide it at hundreds of dollars below market value. And as you can imagine, for a senior who wants to age in place, how important that could be. With that, as Barb mentioned, we've got two developments that we brought to the state. We've been successful in securing important funding that allows for affordable housing, 66 units of each. The multifamily is workforce housing. Our goal is to target young professionals, folks, families in the workforce, working-class individuals who need assistance, because right now, a two-to-three-bedroom unit in your community, if you're talking of any reasonable quality, can be $1,500, $2,000 a month. The ones nearest us are going to be more than $500 a unit higher in rent than what we're able to achieve. So if you're somebody working in the corridor there, in the area, you really got to look outside the area to find something of reasonable affordability. So we're able to provide that in a walkable area with plenty of amenities and services in a growing area of town, to really balance what we hope, the growth in the area. We're excited about being in the area. Since we started this development, cost has certainly increased more than we've seen in our history. I've been doing this since 2006. We weathered the recession and watched the exact opposite happen. Cost went to the floor because you couldn't get capital and equity. Now capital and equity is good, and cost is going through the roofs. Historically, throughout the Midwest, there's no doubt inflation over the period of time where we've gone to the state, applied for the funding, and that secured the funding and headed towards closing. We're talking about a 30-plus percent increase in the cost of doing development. In addition to that, we've got a very complicated site. It is a brownfield, as mentioned. We do have some funds that we've secured to help with that. In addition to that, just our issue with the well. Initially, we were able to design and build on-site. Now we're going to have to do things to help relocate that well. It's not the right location for a well, so in the end, it is better for your water system. We're contributing to that in the process. The pages after the site plan and rendering really talk about the pro forma, and I think that's the important piece. We have seen cost increases that are several million-plus dollars over that period of time, and the state is looking to help, but they're also looking for us to help with local support. In all of our developments in Michigan, these additional funds are necessary, and in Coldwater, Michigan, where we were also funded for development in the same funding round, they initially offered a 6% pilot, and they're going to be reviewing a 3% pilot for us later this month to help with that development. Those are helping act as local matching funds as we go ask the state for some additional resources that they're putting in place, because this is a systemic problem in all of their developments across the state from this round, because of the quick and rapid increase in cost. So without the pilot, this development is 100% deferred, and you can see that in the first column. We're going to be contributing the developer fee that we make off of this development back to the development to make it feasible. And without the pilot, we're 100% deferred. That's not a closable transaction. Our fee actually acts as an insurance policy or protection for the investor in these developments. The tax credit purchaser, that's kind of their insurance policy, is say that if there are drastic cost overruns, we'll hold back that developer fee to use it. So they always make you have a certain amount of payable developer fee in a deal. Historically, that's been more like 40 to 50%. In today's times, it's maybe more like 60%. So we have to show them a deal where we have an underwrite that meets MISTHA's requirements, and the underwrite that we have enough to, have a contribution, a deferred fee in there that matches their risk profile. This development is going to bring 130 brand-new affordable units to market. We're going to be providing them at substantial discount to market. With our 80% AMI targeting, we're able to serve families up to 60-plus, 70-almost-thousand dollars in incomes, help families start, get a foothold in the community where they can grow, and also allow seniors to age gracefully. With that pilot reduction, we can get the deferred fee down to 80%. We are working with our contractor on some value engineering that will get it the remaining hurdle, which is ultimately going to be around a 70 to 75% deferred fee. So we're contributing over 75% of our fee to the development to help assist with the feasibility as well. With that, there's two models there. They essentially range the same way. These developments are very similar in cost and scale. Each is representing around a $13 million investment. So between the two projects, we're talking about putting in place $26 million in new investment in 130-plus new units that are built to green, National Green Building Standard, 100% accessible in here, and hopefully ready to serve residents of your community. As mentioned, as we looked at the pilot, and thank you to the city staff who helped us do some of these calculations, we were able to determine the current tax value on the property. There is a business running, so it does have value, and we're seeing around $27,000 versus the pilot that's going to be bringing in $37,000. So there is an improvement in the value of the property. This is helping the development become feasible. We hope that's important to you. We hope the new investment's important to you in helping serve your residents with high-quality housing. I will say this, is yes, you're right, we will be using services, and we will generate new users. Ultimately, we do hope to serve residents of Lansing, and we will be marketing and targeting Lansing residents, so, and we will be paying all of our water and new usage bills, so, new services, users for the water system, the electric system. We're paying a very big contribution to relocating the well, and want to do anything and everything we can to help see this through. So we appreciate your time and considerations on this, and happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
All right, we appreciate that. Do we have any questions, comments? Vice President Wood.
I have a couple of questions for you. It says in the information that you provided us that you have 28 years-plus experience. Can you tell us the longest property that you've owned?
Yes, the very first one we built, we still own. It's known initially as Deer Run, now it's known as Summit Point. It's in Lawrenceburg, Indiana. It's around 60, 70 units of affordable housing that we built, I think it was '92 or '93. It was before I was there. I was blessed to actually have an opportunity to help rehab that property. In year 20, we went back to the state and applied for resyndication of tax credits and put around $60,000 a unit in complete retrofit of that building. We still own it, we still manage it, and certainly it now operates much stronger after, I think it was around an $11 million new investment we put in the building. I'm guessing it was around eight years ago.
So that extended the mortgage that you had with MISTHA.
Well, that was in Indiana, so it was IHCD.
Wow, yes.
But yes, so with tax credits, it's a 15-year compliance, but with the state of Michigan, they make you obligate a 30-year-plus commitment to affordability. So this will be affordable, long-term, targeting up to 80% AMI.
Okay, was there any talk or thought about designating a certain percentage of the units for market rate, so that we could collect full taxes on the market rate?
With the amount of market in the area and what it costs to build it, we did not feel we could justify the rent that it would require to put in market-rate units. So no, our development proposal to the state was affordable at various income bandwidths, up to 80% AMI.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Hussein. Thank you for your in-depth explanation of the project, I appreciate it. I noticed on your proposal, it has Lansing Housing Commission in the, your partnership. Could you explain that relationship?
Yeah, so as mentioned, we have around 130 developments throughout a 16-state region. I would say around 90% of those developments are done with a local partner. And what we mean by a local partner, our local partners fill up to three roles in development. They can become a co-developer, co-owner with us, and they can also act as our service coordinator. As part of these developments, we provide access to services, linkage to childcare for families, and in senior care, transportation, in-home meals, all sorts of things. So we're always looking for the best local partner to do these things. The Lansing Housing Commission, we approached them and said, "Look, there's a few reasons why we would hope you might want to assist, participate in this development with us." They agreed, they thought it meant, met their missions, goals, and policies to encourage and support new affordable housing in the area. So they joined the development as a co-developer and a co-owner. So they will actually benefit from some of the developer fee and cash flow from this development. In addition to that, they will act as that service coordinator and help assist our residents with linkage to programs and services, and they will also provide a handful of vouchers. As you may know, they did a RAD conversion, I'm guessing, a couple of years ago, and out of that, they do have a few vouchers that they still need to place, that are actually replacement units from that effort, and we're going to move a few of those over, because right now, those units are in obsolete, less-than-desirable, less-accessible, single-family homes, and so we're able to move those over into these, into those. I think it's 12 units per development. The senior development has 12 of those units, and the workforce housing development has 12 of those units.
You have a follow-up question? Yes. Okay. What process do you take when you, or vetting process do you have when you're talking about different community partners and certain providing services and so on, of what you just explained?
What do we do to vet them? Is that what you ask?
Yes, you stated that when you do developments, you have 130 in 16 different states. You have local community partners, whether it's a co-developer or kind of a service-delivery partner.
Yeah.
What process do you go through to identify, to make sure that you have
The right partner.
The right partners to accomplish the impact that you articulated this evening?
Yeah, it varies from state to state, because each state program has a scoring system that helps you compete, and the state has 100 applications a year, and they have enough money to fund 20, and so you have to compete with the scoring. There's various reasons why we use the Housing Commission. Not only is there experience and capacity, also the fact that they had a RAD, that they were trying to finish the conversion of, and the ability for them to partner with us helped them finish some of that off. In addition to that, as we compete with the state, where there were some very specific supporting scoring categories that the Housing Commission could provide, that other local partners couldn't, that made us successful.
Did that answer your question?
Okay. Before I turn the floor over to Vice President Wood, I don't speak for the council, I speak for myself.
Sure.
You know, the fact that we're looking at the Lansing Housing Commission in this moment, as whether that be co-developer, co-owner, service coordinator, provider, is incredibly concerning to me. When you look at right now, the Lansing Housing Commission and their inventory, they are having an incredibly difficult time servicing their inventory, whether you're talking about their asset management properties, or, which has been all throughout the news, obviously, the issues that they've had historically servicing their scattered-site homes, and the fact is, they're in the process right now of trying to shed many of those. I have a property that was in my ward, is no longer in my ward, but I'm still at that property at least two to three times a week, talking to the residents there, et cetera. That would be South Washington Park. We, dating back to 2016, we have worked incredibly hard as a, as a body, as respective council members, to try to enhance, you know, some of the management practices and the oversight and at that particular location. We've tried to enhance services from the city of Lansing to support that location. Frankly, because of the failures of the Housing Commission, we have had people murdered at that property. As a matter of fact, we've had two shootings within the last two weeks at that particular property, and it is simply an unsafe place to live for some of the most vulnerable in our community. So there are some systemic failures within the Housing Commission, and to be thinking that they might be any type of partner in this particular development is concerning to me. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I concur with everything that the president spoke on, and I realize he spoke as an individual and not as the council. How much money will the Lansing Housing Commission receive as part of the development?
I can't really speak to that, because the deferred fee right now is still in question of what it will be. They get a share, a percent share of the fee. I can say this about the commission, I feel for any housing commission across the state. They're working with lots of obsolete building, obsolete buildings, older buildings, tough financing, and a lot of, a lot of challenges with HUD in general, and I think your commission does, is trying to do a very good job. I think they can be a good partner, but if I can just say this to reassure you, when we brought them the opportunity to partner, we made sure, because we will be the guarantor, the actual financially obligated body on this development. Any development that we develop, whether it's with a housing commission, a community action agency, you know, a CDC, we've worked with any and all types of not-for-profits, we are the financially obligated guarantor of the project, and we are the long-term property manager on the property. So we, while they are our partner, I do want to clarify that we are the property manager, and it's our staff that will manage the property, and we are the managing member who will control the condition and what we do and don't do with the property.
Where do you live, sir?
I'm in Cincinnati, Ohio.
Okay. I'm here in Lansing, Michigan.
Yes.
And I'm a stone's throw away from different units that are managed by the Lansing Housing Commission, and we have had numerous issues with them. They can give you information on paper that looks good, but I can tell you that this body and the majority of us have been out there at different locations that the Housing Commission has, from single-family units to multi-units, where there have been problems, where tenants are not safe, where children cannot play, where seniors have, are afraid to come out of their buildings, that have been accosted in their parking lots, that have had their doors kicked in on their apartments. So what it looks like on paper and what you might be obligated to is different from what we see and have to deal with on a regular basis.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spitzley. Oh, did you not have your hand up? Oh, I apologize. Okay, fantastic. Councilman Daniels.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I would just like to reiterate exactly what I would just like to reiterate exactly what they've said. You know, I know that you went and you said that you vetted them, and you can find these things on paper, and I actually don't know how far into this process you are and whether or not you could hypothetically look at other partners, but the promises that you're making and in the situation that you're talking about, I don't know if it's necessarily feasible with the Lansing Housing Commission. And I hope that you're able to take another look at that.
All right. Do we have other questions, comments? I ain't seeing none. We appreciate you two being here. Thank you.
Okay. Our next presentation is on payment in lieu of, I'm sorry, yes, payment in lieu of taxes for Hillsdale Place.
Councilwoman Spitzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a, we're having a public hearing tonight. This is the Griffin Group. Come down and, oops. And it's 40 units, 20 of those reserved for supportive services with the assistance from Community Mental Health and Advent House. This is on 1020 West Hillsdale. They initially applied for a 10% pilot, but now are here for a 4% pilot. And with that, Ms. Kimmel?
Hi.
Hello.
So we are here to talk about
Can I stop you just for a moment?
Of course.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay, just pull it in just a little bit.
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much.
Yep, okay, great. So we are here to talk about Hillsdale Place. They are requesting a 4% pilot for 45 years. They do already have a 10% pilot on this property. And they are building four two-story buildings that will house 40 units of safe, healthy, affordable housing, and it will be a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. And currently, well, the parcel that they're going to be building on is 1020 Hillsdale. That is a city-owned parcel. We have owned that parcel since 1999, so it currently doesn't generate any property taxes, and it actually costs the city money to maintain it. With the pilot in place, there will be approximately almost $17,000 in revenue generated for the city. So I'm going to turn it over to the developer.
Hey, good evening. I'm Tim Hovey with Griffin Group, developing, build, affordable, and market-rate housing all around the state of Michigan. We have 30-some projects within the state, ranging from Kalamazoo up to the UP locally. We just finished up 100 units down in Holt. We have 40 units of senior down in Eaton Rapids. We have 60 units of senior in East Lansing, 64 units out in DeWitt. So although we're around the state, we are very invested within the community. Originally, I'm from, I grew up, was born in Lansing area, went to Michigan State, moved back to DeWitt, where I graduated high school from, and now recently just moved out to Bath. So I am local, and I am invested in the area, and I'm happy to be looking at doing more housing within your community. What we're looking at doing is 40 units, as Barb mentioned, all affordable. 20 of those units will be for homeless. We have project-based voucher units that are tied to 20 of those units. The other 20 will be affordable, up to 60% AMI, but will not have vouchers associated with it. We are working with community nonprofits. Advent House and Community Mental Health are going to be our service providers for that development. So we have a team of people that are well-versed in homeless population within your community and will be helping us with those tenants that we provide housing for and services associated with that. We set aside roughly $370,000 for the services that are to be provided by those service partners so we can make sure that we have people on site that are taking care of the needs of this population. And in the Lansing area, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think what the homeless population was several hundred people. Is that correct? 3,000, no, more than hundreds, thousands of homeless. So this type of housing is needed within your community, and I'm here to provide that. In doing so and providing this type of housing, there is a need for help in how this is financially structured. As was mentioned by the previous gentleman, the economics lately with inflation are causing issues on cost of housing. So there is a gap that's being, that we're realizing in the financing structure that we need help, you know, with funding. And additionally, we had interest rates jump a point on us for our financing package on this development, and that means that we can't borrow as much money because we're paying a higher interest rate in order to keep our debt service at the same level. So what we can do to lower that is drop our operating expenses, and that's what we're looking to do here, is go from a 10% pilot to a 4% pilot, to drop our operating expenses. So as our revenue, you know, is going to be the same, and, you know, due to inflation and the cost and the higher interest rates, our operating costs are going up, so we need help in dropping that. That's why we're back before you.
All right. And Ms. Drasty, did you have anything to add? No? All right. Do we have questions or comments? We'll first go to Councilman Brown and then Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I was just wondering, where are you getting the project-based vouchers from for this?
Through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTHA.
All right. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. My first question is, do you have any other partners that we should know about?
No, I'm the, it'll be an LLC that's formed. I'm the managing member. I'm the, the only other partner that'll be involved, the only other member will be the investor that comes in to buy the tax credits. So for all intents and purposes, it's really me, just me, no other partners.
Okay. And who will be managing this?
We have Medallion Management that we're working with. They're out of Kalamazoo. They are currently doing the 100, managing the 100 units that we have down in Holt, which is also a project-based voucher housing. We have 20 of the 66 units in Phase 1 in Preswick Village that has housing for the homeless. So they are well-versed in management of not only affordable housing, market-rate housing, but housing for the homeless, victims of domestic violence, so on. So, yeah, Medallion Management out of Kalamazoo is who I'm using.
Okay. And what is the longest piece of property development that you've owned?
So I graduated college back in '96. First development I put together was in '98. That's down in Three Rivers, Michigan, called Woodbrook Senior Homes. I still own that. That was financed through Rural Development, and we do have some MISTHA funds involved with that one as well. We have a 4% pilot on that development. We still own it, and we're getting ready to rehab it, so.
So you're going back to MISTHA for another loan for that?
Yeah. We're going to re-up, and I think as the previous gentleman mentioned
Which will lengthen the time of the pilot.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Councilwoman, all right. Councilwoman Spitzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm curious about the homeless aspect. So how do you, who do you get your referrals from? How does that work?
You want to take this one?
So there are two different target populations in the supportive housing in this deal. 10 of the units will be targeted specifically for the top 10%, most in need in the community, and those will be referred out from the local housing assessment resource organization, which is a part of the COC. They have a committee that actually sits in and looks at all of the homeless population that they have in their HMIS system to determine who would be the most in need, that would be eligible to be tenants in the property. So they will be referring all of the people into those 10 units. The other 10 units will be referred in by other COC support service organizations. Because lead service agencies are CMH and Advent House, as a unit becomes available, they will send out notifications to the COC members, who will then be asked to help clients that they have apply.
So is it, is it Sorry. Is it temporary housing or is it long-term housing? What is it?
It's long-term. They will be required to sign a minimum of a year's lease and have the ability to renew their leases and live there as long as they qualify.
All right. Do we have other questions or comments?
All right. The only thing I'll say, just for, you know, anybody in the audience and different developers we've had up there, questions have come from Councilwoman Wood, and I think what she's trying to get at is there seems to be this trick of the trade when it comes to pilots, in that we take less taxes, and there, the social contract between us and the developer is that with us taking less taxes and potentially being able to provide less services, frankly, the idea is that you're going to invest that money into your property to make sure that that property remains appropriate through the life of the pilot. And it seems, at the end of, whether it be 25 or 35 or 45 years, it seems we are always asked, once again, to consider a pilot, and a lot of times, it's because those properties have been let go, frankly, and maintenance has been deferred. And so we are right back at the same spot, and it seems like a windfall for the developer, frankly. So with that being said, and with no other questions or comments, we appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Do you mind if I make a comment on that, or does that
Very quickly. Yes.
Okay. Just, you know, that is a big issue, and we are required as developers to put reserves aside at the beginning of the project and also annually going forward to take care of any of those maintenance needs. But that doesn't cover everything. After, you know, 25 years, 30 years, there are things that that reserve can't cover, and you really need to go back through the Affordable Housing Program to get funds, you know, to be able to address those bigger need issues.
But I do appreciate you recognizing that that concern, generally speaking, has merit.
Oh, absolutely. And we see this, you know, in other communities, and, you know, the good thing when you're working with programs that are funded through the State Housing Development Authority, let's say, not that I would, but let's say that you had an owner that didn't take care of their property. The city, if they said, "Hey, you need to get a new roof on that," or, you know, the siding's, "You need new siding," or whatever it may be, "Doors getting kicked in, you need new doors." And I, as a developer, say, "Ah, yeah, I don't think so." You can go to the authority, authority will take a look at it, MISTHA, and they'll come out, and if they agree that, yes, that absolutely needs to be addressed, they will dip into the funds and take me out of the loop on that. So there's protection for the community with that. So it is a big concern, and I understand it fully, what you're saying.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And our final presentation is Item 6, the Oprah certificate for 700 May Street Summit Street Development.
Councilwoman Spitzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for that. What we have before us is a rezone request, a public hearing for rezone request for 700 May Street. This is property located near Motor Wheel Lofts. It is a vacant, it is a rehab of a vacant manufacturing site to create 134 workforce development housing units. So do you want to start, Carl?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. I'm Carl Dors, is that too loud? I'm Carl Dorsmer, and I have with me Harry Hepler and Steve Purchase of H, Inc. And the reason we're here tonight is for the public hearing on Summit Street Development LLC's, their application for a 12-year Oprah tax abatement for their $12 million residential development at the Pruden Center. And the Oprah tax break will allow the project to go forward, because without the Oprah, it doesn't make economic sense to the developer. It's a challenging building. It's an old industrial building, and, you know, Harry and Steve have, you know, have faced a lot of challenges over the year to make that building work. It's a tough building, but they've been very clever, and they've come up with another, I think, really good idea. The property is currently generating about $53,000 of taxes per year, of which the city collects about $13,500. So not a whole lot of tax revenue currently coming from the building, this portion of the building where the project takes place. But that revenue stream will continue during the life of the Oprah because the base value stays the same. The Oprah is only enjoyed on the increase in value as a result of the developer's investment in the property. So additionally, the Oprah does not abate the state education tax or the school operating taxes. So the developer will also pay an additional about $68,000 per year in school taxes. And even with the Oprah tax abatement, and the tax savings to the developer from the Oprah will be an estimated $200,000 per year, and then of that $200,000, about $74,000 represents city property taxes. So, and again, that is on the increase in value as a result of them investing $12 million into the property. Also, they estimate about 200 people will live in the residential development, and I estimate about half of those would be new to the city, and I think that's a conservative estimate. And then based on that, I believe the city will collect an additional about $42,000 per year in city income tax from those new residents. And then, so when you put those two revenue sources together, even with the Oprah, the city is going to collect about $55,500, which when you compare that to the $13,500, it's about $42,000 per year in increase, even with the Oprah. So there's a slight increase there. And they do pay the other taxes, the state education and the school operating taxes. So, you know, over the life of the Oprah, the city, you know, gains an estimated about $500,000 when you look at it over a 12-year period. And then, of course, after the Oprah expires in year 13, then they pay the full rate, right? And at that point, the city will collect about $130,000 per year off this particular property, you know, versus the $13,000 that are currently being collected. So, you know, even with the Oprah, the city comes out ahead financially, both during and after the Oprah expires, and obviously, in the long run, you know, the Oprah is a tool to encourage private investment into obsolete buildings, older buildings, contaminated buildings, to get them more valuable, to keep them on the tax rolls, and increase their value, and also attract additional business and residents to the city. So now, I'll turn it over to Harry and Steve, and they're going to give a little detail in terms of the actual project and details. So, Harry, Steve?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I think it's important to address Pruden Wheel as a site. It's a 25-acre site that I acquired with Summit Street Development back in 1997 that sat vacant for more than 25 years, boarded up. This site was plagued with what's called physical obsolescence, which means it had no frontage to any of the 25 acres. It was taken away by design by M43, which is a one-way Saginaw Highway, and M43 Oakland on the other side. And the only way to access the property was to, if you could make your car float or hover, you could get to it, or you could cut through a neighborhood that's just off of North Penn, or you could cut through a neighborhood off a one-way street on North Larch. Over those, from 1955 to the 1970s, Motor Wheel, who resided in the Pruden Wheel Building, caused great degradation to those neighborhoods by running three shifts of trucks and trailers and industrial sites and trains and whatnot. We came to the city council back in 1998 and requested that we use some north precinct funds to use a match fund to give up some property and to create a road called Pruden Street. By creating this Pruden Street Road, we were able to take away the physical obsolescence to the 25 acres and turn this property back into a viable part of the community. This was, has been nothing but a great success for the previous council members and mayor at the time, and with efforts of many, it's, we promised about $225,000 in property taxes. Today, with Pruden Place and Motor Wheel and the Pruden Tech Center, where there's office space next to this particular site, this property produces more than $440,000 in property taxes. So it's been a great success. We're very We're very proud of it. And with that said, we have struggled through different economic times, such as the '08 crisis, when we were getting ready to target this 70,000 square feet in space, and there was a great setback. And then again, in 2014, where we had the space leased and the tenant reneged on the lease and pulled away, and then again with COVID. It was targeted for 70,000 square feet of office space. I went back to some of my old notes about creating a community within that space and came up with this design of the cottages at Pruden Wheel. We believe that this is the best use for this old industrial space. It's the most creative use for the space. It will take away 70,000 square feet of office, vacant office space that's currently at a little over 800,000 square feet of current vacant office space in the downtown central business district. By taking this 70,000 square feet away, we will reduce the vacancy, arguably, it's around 25%, and that will reduce it closer to 20 or 21%. That number is, you know, it can vary depending on who you talk to. But certainly, we have more than enough office space, and it doesn't need to compete with a central business district. By converting this industrial space into what we call workforce housing is a little different than what we've heard here tonight. Our workforce housing is supported by traditional bank financing and is market price. And what we've done in our design is to create a space that is about 400 to 500 square feet. They're all one-bedrooms or one-bedroom with lofts. They're designed for the young professionals, whether it be RNs or residents at Sparrow, whether it be new hires at NeoGen in their new factory, whether it be for people who are working downtown in a new career, that are coming from MSU and have decided to make Lansing their home. This is their first step into their own space where they can call home. By shrinking the footprint down to 400 to 500 square feet, we then can create a large common area within this industrial space that you may see pictures behind me that are rotating through, which is about 20,000 square feet of common area that has plants that we're going to be sequestering rainwater and feeding those plants with roof rainwater that we're sequestering in an old nuclear fallout tunnel, because when this building was built in 1958, it had to have a nuclear fallout tunnel. We have since turned, we have earmarked that tunnel to basically hold all the rainwater that comes off the roof, and then utilize that through what they call purple line to flush toilets, to irrigate those plants, and those plants will create abundant fresh air inside that facility. So it's important that we create a high level of breathable air inside there, not because it has any contamination, more because we want the presence of that common area space to feel more like the outdoor space. So there'll be water running through there, circulated off that particular cistern, and then feeding those plants and flushing toilets. Now flushing toilets is a concern. You've heard about, people talk about utilities today. I heard you talk about board and water light. By sequestering this water and using it through a purple line, that will reduce the utility usage, which has an impact on the tenant. By having a building that covers these living units, we are, the tenants are going to spend far less in utility bills. We estimate 50% less than the similar square footage where the building would be outside and taking on the elements, such as direct sunlight, or direct wind, or cold, or northerly wind, or that sort of thing. So I'm happy to run through any of these photographs if you have questions. This is not unsimilar to what we did back in, let's see, it would be, I have to go back, 2005, we came to you with Motor Wheel, and we asked for a neighborhood enterprise zone. We created 119 condos and pushed it into a neighborhood enterprise zone. It has since left that program and went from $32,000 a year to today paying approximately, I think, about 190 or approximately $200,000 a year in property taxes. So Motor Wheel is a very productive part of the city. And then we also brought Pat Gillespie in prior to Motor Wheel, and we had a really difficult time convincing people, that mostly finance people, that people would live in Motor Wheel when we built it. So we promoted Pat Gillespie to come across the railroad tracks on the western side of the railroad tracks and sold him those five acres and made him a part of our brownfield. So he helped co-develop that. Once that took place in 2005, we were able to pull financing and go forward with Motor Wheel, because we were able to prove that people would live on this urban island, if you will, sandwiched between M-43 and US-27. So we've had a great success, and we would appreciate if council members and the mayor would consider this support.
All right. Mr. Purchase, do you have anything to add?
I don't, I don't think so. No.
All right. Questions or comments? Council colleagues, Vice President Wood.
Harry, how many units from Pruden Place right now are rented?
Pruden Place is Pat Gillespie's, and the last I saw it, it was...
Motor Wheel, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll talk about Pruden Place versus 97%, and right now, Motor Wheel is sitting at 98%.
Okay.
All right. Do we have other questions, comments? All right. Seeing no, we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
All right. Do we have council comments? Councilwoman Spitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let folks know, and I put it on my Facebook page, that in the United States, we have done our millionth organ transplant, and, you know, how important that is, particularly African Americans who don't historically donate and subscribe to donate organs. And we've had people here in the city of Lansing, brave loved ones who have, who have made those difficult choices to donate organs of their loved ones. And so, you know, as I looked at that this morning, I thought it was just a good thing to remind people and to let people know about the benefit of organ donation. I know it's kind of a macabre thing to think about, but it saved so many lives, and for people, you know, we know people right now that are waiting for kidneys or waiting for hearts. It's important to just think about that, and it's just a box check on your license that you're willing to do that and to be a candidate for organ donation. And so I just wanted to bring that to bear, that, you know, we have had our millionth organ donation, and the first one was brothers who, one of the brothers was dying, and the brother donated his kidney to the other brother, and I think they were twins, and they, it was a perfect match, and that gave their brother, I think he was 23, and gave him eight more years of life because of that organ donation. And so I'm sure his brother thought that was well worth it. So as we think about that, I just ask you to consider organ donation. Thank you.
All right. Other council member comments? Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. I just have a couple of things. One, the Eastside Neighborhood Meeting, Eastside Neighborhood Organization meeting is this Wednesday at 6:30 PM. And then this Saturday, September 10th, from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, at the Fledge is the Fledge Foundation Garden Party fundraiser. And if you don't know anything about the Fledge, I'm sorry? Oh, it was last Saturday. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, guys. Anyway, well, I'm done. That's just what happened.
Not a problem. Are there others?
That was really good.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Very quickly, I want to first thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting in the third ward this past Saturday. As usual, Southwest Lansing showed up in droves. It was a very well-attended meeting. We discussed a number of issues that are pertinent to Southwest Lansing, frankly, things that we've been attacking a long time, and we're finally starting to see a little bit of traction, and it was a fantastic conversation. The other aspect of the conversation was some of the really good things that are happening behind the curtain, money that's being plunked down, as an example, into the dirt in Southwest Lansing or getting ready to be plunked down, economic development, job growth, and the like. We actually have Carl Dorsheimer here from LEDC. I want to thank Carl and his team. They were well represented at that meeting, and they're doing a lot of incredible work over in Southwest Lansing, so we certainly appreciate you all, your work, and I want you guys to know that Southwest Lansing recognizes that, and we appreciate it. We also had a number of area representatives that were on hand to be part of the discussion. You know who you are. Thank you. We appreciate you being there. Our next two constituent contact meetings, we always, in the third ward, hold our meetings the second Saturday of every month from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. So we will have one on October 8th from 10:00 to 12:00 noon, and that will be at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. We actually meet in the Sandy Allen Room. Again, that's 10:00 to 12:00 noon. And then we'll meet again on November 12th, 10:00 to 12:00 noon, at 5825 Wise Road, which is Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. So we would love to have you. You don't necessarily have to live in Southwest Lansing to come. We do address Southwest, that is the hyper-focus, but we certainly take a look at issues that impact the broader community as well. The mayor and I talked earlier today about 927 South Washington. We have gotten a number of, and I know Mr. Daniels has as well, we've gotten a number of complaints with regards to that particular building. We have met folks, actually out on-site, to talk about the specific issues that they have with that particular building. This is a multi-storied residential building that has been dormant for quite some time. And the mayor has assured me, and I just want to provide this as an update for some folks that might be paying attention, that the concerns have not fallen on deaf ears, that there's been quite a bit of enforcement at that particular location. There are things we can and can't do, but they are going to continue to explore the tools in the toolbox. My understanding is the mayor is going to talk to our city attorney about maybe some things that we could potentially do with provisions that are allowed for per state statute. But I wanted to make sure that folks knew that we are actively working that particular property. And then lastly, with regards to transparency, I promised an update at the last meeting in terms of particularly committee meetings and the live broadcast, I should say, live streaming of those, the archiving of those, and so we do have an update to provide you. Vice President Wood, myself, Dominic Cochran of City Media, as well as Sherry Bulke, was our office manager. We've been, we've been working this issue to try to, at least with the budget that we have in place and the staffing that we have in place now, to do something to increase transparency with regards to the committees. And so we actually had Dominic come in. He took inventory of the equipment that we actually have in the room behind us. That is where all of the committee meetings actually take place. We were hoping that we had the equipment in place. We actually do not have the equipment in place. We had to purchase, or I should say, lease a camera. There's the potential of having to purchase an additional camera, and then there's actually operating infrastructure that we had to purchase as well. Those agreements have been put in place. The equipment has actually been shipped. We're expecting the equipment to arrive this Wednesday. We will have City Media up to the 10th floor on Friday. They will install, they will work with the equipment, make sure that it's operating, and hopefully, by next week, the following week at the very latest, we should be able to begin actually live streaming those committee meetings, archiving those committee meetings, and adding some measure of transparency to our committee meetings. So we're excited about that. I want to specifically thank the public for your advocacy. I want to thank Dominic Cochran with City Media. He's been fantastic. And then also our office manager, Sherry Bulke, who's been incredible as well. All right. That being said, Clerk Swob.
Thank you, President Hussein. Just a couple of things briefly. First, I want to welcome our intern, new intern for this next few months, Jason Gillespie in the back, has been helping folks sign in, so welcome, Jason. Thank you for joining us. Today was his first day in the office, so he's trial by fire with the council meeting. And then I also want to mention that we did mail out absentee ballot applications to folks who have not applied for a ballot. Again, those are only applications if you do not want to vote by absentee ballot. You do not need to return it. If you do wish to, you can use that, or there are other ways that you can get an absentee ballot, or you can vote in your polling place on Election Day. And there will be more information to come on all of those options as we're a few weeks away from the election. After, I guess the next keystone date is the 29th, which is when we will be mailing out the ballots, the actual ballots, to folks who have requested them by a couple of days before that. So watch by, around the 1st of October for a ballot to arrive at home if you have requested one. And with that, we are to community event announcements. For community events, you can just hop up, and we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the nature and details of your event.
Mark your calendars now for the annual fall walking tour for the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries. This year's tour, Sunday, September 25th, in Mount Hope Cemetery at 3:00 PM, is ghosts, ghouls, and graveyard. We have been collaborating with the Capital Area Paranormal Research Society of Michigan, a professional genealogist, and the author of Haunted Lansing. The paranormal group will be explaining and displaying equipment used in ghost hunting. Our genealogist will be sharing intriguing relationships among multiple murder victims buried in the cemetery, and the author will be signing and selling her book, which is largely the inspiration for the tour. All of them will be participating in the tour itself as well. This is scheduled from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. For this tour, parental discretion is advised, as this one may not be appropriate for young children. The tour is free and open to the public. There will be light refreshments at the intermission. Join us as we explore the haunting history in this iconic cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. DeShnol.
Hi, Shannon Norris. Two things. One, the public is invited to the Fledge every opposite Monday. City council meetings, we have a meeting for, it's called the People's Council, and if anybody wants to meet us there at 7:00 PM, all people are welcome to discuss any issues about the city. Secondly, on Wednesday, the 14th, Friends of Bancroft Park is meeting at Bancroft Park at 5:30, and then we'll be headed over from the park at 5:30 to go over to Foster Center for the City Parks Board meeting, which starts at 6:30. One thing that will be discussed, of course, is input on the proposal of a driving range at Bancroft Park. So we hope we get a lot of people out to make their needs known. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else, we'll move on to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters is Items 7 through 25 on the agenda, although it's made aware that Item 25 will not be acted on tonight, but it is on the printed agenda, so Items 7 through 25. We'll give you about another minute to jump up and sign up with Jason, and in the meantime, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a variety of things, so I'll go quick. First, I want to congratulate Lansing native Carol Hutchins on her retirement as softball coach at U of M, the winningest softball coach in college history, and she is an Everett grad, in case anybody's wondering. The field is named after her. People sometimes forget, they remember Magic Johnson, they remember a few others, they forget that the winningest college softball coach played right here in Lansing at Everett, so go Vikings. I also want to thank everybody who was involved in our 9/11 ceremony yesterday. It was incredible. It rained, so we had to move it indoors for the first time, but our fire chief was great, our assistant police chief was great, we had some young ladies who sang. It was just an incredible ceremony, as it is every year. So I thought about it afterwards, we probably should have recognized all the folks who died at 9/11 21 years ago, which is hard to believe, but something to think about and share, but thank you to everybody who participated in the city event. We've had a lot of great things going on in Lansing. We had the Caesar Chavez Fiesta on Friday and Saturday, so Old Town in that lot was packed, so thank you for everybody who made that happen. DLI had their volunteer and business awards night, which again was packed downtown. NeoGen, our, one of our wonderful businesses, their project to, for their 71 and a half million dollar new three-story manufacturing and research building downtown, received $324,000 from the state, from the Michigan Business Development Program, so that's great. This is going to create 77 new jobs, as well as retain 350 jobs, and again, it's 71 and a half million dollars of investment right here in our city, an international company, which is fantastic. Finally, I will mention and thank our staff. We had our employee appreciation night. Thank you to all of our city employees. We had about 1,000 people at the lug nuts to watch the game and to be appreciated, so thank you to all of our city employees. It was a lot of fun. The food was good, just being able to get out and chat, and then celebrating those who have been here for 30 years and 20 years on the field was a lot of fun. We have a lot of cool things coming up. This weekend, Friday and Saturday in Old Town, we have Blues Fest, September 17th... Saturday in Old Town, we have Blues Fest. September seventeenth, the AARP is at Lansing's Fit Lot for Grandparents Day from one to four P.M., and you can preregister through the AARP. The Turning Point of Lansing has their kickoff meeting this Sunday, September eighteenth, four P.M. at the Harry Hill Vocational Center Auditorium. African-American boys in seventh through twelfth grades are invited to be there. We have our Capital City River Run on Sunday morning. I will be running, as will my wife, Councilman Jack. No, not this year. Every year I get beat by Councilman Jackson, so this year, one less person to beat me, but that should be a lot of fun. I think it was mentioned in Committee of the Whole, on September twentieth, the Board of Water and Light has a Resource Fair at Letts from one to five P.M. And September twenty-first, the Board of Water and Light has a Resource Fair at the Schmidt Center from four to eight P.M., both incredible resources for Lansing residents. Mikey Twenty-Three has their Foundation Gala Friday, September twenty-third. September twenty-third and twenty-fourth also is Afro Fest downtown. We have our next farmer's market at the Capitol on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. And then finally, October first will be the opening for our neighborhood grants. That's when our grants applications go live, and it'll be open for a few months. And then anybody who wants a neighborhood grant can work with our Neighborhood Advisory Board. We have some extra dollars this year due to ARPA, so we're going to put some dollars into the neighborhoods, and that's going to be exciting. So we look forward to all the proposals. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, very quickly, can you repeat the date that goes live?
It goes live October first. And I think it's supposed to be open until, it may be open until March first. I think they were giving an extra month this year, so that way we can make sure to help out groups with different projects. And I can send that to anyone. I know I went fast, but I don't want to take too much more time.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And first, I'll indicate some written communications that we've received that'll be made part of the record. We have a letter from Timothy Schumacher against Z-two of twenty-twenty-two. We have a letter from Brandon Carlson opposing Z-three of twenty-twenty-two. Another letter from Ann Ribby opposing Z-three of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. We have a letter from Nancy Malo in opposition to the pilots and Oprah. And another communication from Don Dean with the same position on the pilots and Oprah. And a letter from Julienne Vaton, expressing concerns about the pilots and Oprah, as well as the village. And then our first speaker here with us tonight is Rachel Kiani, followed by Loretta Stanaway. And the folks here have up to three minutes.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Spitzley?
Yes.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I remember the conversation in operations. So absolutely, bring your interpreter up to the podium. And we certainly appreciate both of you being here.
Okay. in front of all of you guys. I'm here because I need help. In my country, which is Burma, we are having a hard time, and we are having a civil war. My parents, my family, my siblings, everyone, we only have shirts to wear and pants to wear. And so for me, I have to support as much as I can. So I'm having financially a problem myself. So I ask everyone to give me a chance to speak more. So I am here asking that to at least reduce my fine, my payments, because for me, even fifty or a hundred dollars is very much for me.
All right. And because of the special circumstances, I do want to just stop very quickly. She was speaking to number twenty-one. Councilwoman Spitzley, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to say the same thing, and thank you, Councilmember President Hussein. They are talking about claim appeal number one nine eight four, which is our resolutions for action, one eight nine four, thank you, resolutions for action. It's six hundred and ten dollars in trash fees at fifty-seven thirty-six Laporte Drive. It was basically a couch that was on the curb, and it was on the curb for a while, and it was picked up by the City of Lansing, and they are charged six hundred and sixty dollars. And so she's here to appeal that charge.
All right. Thank you. Clerk Swol.
Okay, our next speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Hamid Koatsi.
Okay, I'm going to echo what some of the letters that you received that weren't read into the record and are just filed away, where people have a hard time seeing what was said in those letters. I do not support any of the pilots or the Oprah, simply because, although they sound like good projects, we cannot afford them. If we have financial issues, we have to pare our budgets down and reach a point where we can afford what we're trying to do. They need to do the same thing. If their projects are not feasible at the levels that they want to get these Oprahs for, or these project pilots for, they need to trim them back, trim them back to where they are feasible, and get us off of the hook for private profit to private developers. The citizens cannot afford to pad the developers' pockets any longer. We couldn't afford in the first place, but we certainly can't afford it any longer. So if they can't trim them back to a point where they can afford them, scaling them down now, and then expanding later as changes occur that make them more feasible to add on or to increase them, then they shouldn't build them. That's all there is to it. And talking about the housing needs, I sat here last time and listened to a lot of conversation about how we house people or don't, how we stack up the poor and low income into buildings where they're warehoused and their facilities aren't up to par, and their lifestyle is lacking. Yet, we don't think in ways that are creative and could change things in a more substantive way. Now, I know there are legal hurdles to this, but just as an example of thinking outside of the box that we could be doing, that we don't do, McLaren vacated all of that property on Washington and Gray Lawn. There's acres and acres and acres of vacant land essentially there at this point in time. Somebody could come in, buy that up, tear everything down, tear everything out, create an entire new subdivision. You could put seventy-five, eighty, a hundred brand-new homes in that footprint, generating new taxes, new property taxes, new students for the school system, new workers paying income taxes. All kinds of different things could better that space than having it sit there as it has been, or waiting for someone like Child and Family Services as a nonprofit to take it over and pay no taxes still, or the Veterans Administration, or whoever's being discussed at the latest round of conversations. The conversation earlier tonight was that the existing pilots, twenty-eight existing pilots, cost us on average two point seven million dollars a year. The pilots that were being requested by the stadium lots doubled that nearly, doubled that to four-something per million per year in lost income.
Thank you. Next is Hamid Katowazi, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Yes, thanks for giving me a chance tonight. Yeah, I'm talking about that Hillsdale Street, ten seventeen, West Hillsdale, so which is the trash of the two thousand two hundred fifteen dollar for my property. And I had a tenant there for almost two years, which he was working with me, and I just helped him. And they were there. And I saw a notice, which was sent by the city, the first notice to the tenant. And he texted me that, the notice, and it was mentioned that it must be cleaned. I told the tenant, and you have to clean that trash from outside. And at the same time, I had inspection from the City of Lansing.
Hamid, can I stop you just for a second? We've got a couple of people in the audience that are speaking, and then in addition to that, we're struggling hearing you. Could you maybe move the mic up just a little bit? Speak up just a little bit, because I want to make sure that we can hear you.
Okay, sir. Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Here, come, sir. Can you hear me now better? Okay. Yes. And at the same time, did you hear up to here? At the same time, I had inspection in my house, and I told my tenant and inspector would come, Greg Scramger from the City of Lansing. And he came twice, and he gave me a chance. And went there inside. He said, I'm not going to inspect that house because it's very, I'm sorry, it's very dirty. And there was three dogs, which is, I allowed only one dog. I have it in the lease. So, and the inside was the same as the outside. I told them, and because of that eviction was going on, and also it was red tag after that. And the day before, on Thursday, the judge signed the eviction. And I did like my application to the court. It was, I believe it was in March. I do have that document. So until like the day, until Thursday, I was waiting for that eviction. So yes, on Thursday, on Friday, actually, yeah, I got my house back. And I do have a new video, if you want to check, that if you see, it might cost me three thousand dollars to just take all that trash out. So, and also, it's my first time I couldn't pay my tax in almost ten years because of that situation. I paid my property tax, but I could not pay this because of my economy situation. Thank you so much, everyone, for giving me a chance.
Thank you, sir. Next is Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Kyle Richard.
Good evening, Farhan Sheikh Omar. First, I think we should grant this lady's appeal. It doesn't cost six hundred to pick up a chair, a couch. That's outrageous. You guys are taking advantage of your citizens. So grant her her appeal, please. As far as the pilots go, and these big developers, we continue to, sounds like the same thing we've been hearing and seeing for years. I think the most important question you guys should have asked them was, like, what does affordability mean to you? Because a lot of times, they come here, they sit there to talk about, oh, we're going to create forty units of affordable housing for the homeless, for low-income families. But at the end, once they do get that pilot or that tax break, those who they're supposed to create for those units, they can't afford it. So we need units that people can afford. We need housing that people can afford. And therefore, we shouldn't just give these folks a big, huge tax breaks before they even do anything for the citizens of Lansing. I think we should treat them the same way that we treat kids. Once you do A, you will get B. So these huge tax breaks that they continue to get without showing us anything year in and year out, and then they come back and then ask for more, I mean, that's a slap in the face. The slap in our face. That should not be allowed. And so also, anybody who does business with Lansing Housing Commission, that's a red flag. The Lansing Housing Commission is a disgrace. And I mean that. Lansing Housing Commission is a disgrace. What they have done to the citizens of this city, like, it's a crime. It's really a crime. It's inhumane. It's un-American. It's unacceptable. And it's been going on for years. So for you guys to stand up for Lansing residents tonight, that's huge. That's really huge. You know, Doug Fleming wants to tell us that he's doing Lansing residents a favor by selling these units in order to create more units for low-income families. That's like telling citizens of this city, hey, we're going to hire more cops, but we're going to get rid of the ones that we currently have. There's a word for that. It's called counterproductive. You don't just get rid of what you already have, the assets that you already have, and then tell us that you're going to create more, because it doesn't guarantee anything. How do we know you're going to make sure that the units that you're going to create are up to date when you have shown us for years that you're going to, when you have shown us for years that you have neglected the ones that you currently have, although you've been collecting millions and millions of dollars from the federal government? And so there needs to be more accountability in this city. There needs to be more affordable housing, like truly affordable housing in this city, because there's a lot of people who are homeless, who can't afford things, and they need help. Grant that young woman her appeal, please.
Thank you. And our final speaker for this portion is Kyle Richard.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm here to speak on items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, the pilots and the Oprah. I appreciate it. It was nice to see this council have some teeth with land developers and ask real questions. I agree about with Farhan on the question of affordability and what that means. I especially appreciated the question Vice President Wood with regard to where the developer was from. I guess pilots for me feel like, they feel kind of slimy. They feel kind of like a, a pilot feels like a fancy abbreviation for like not investing in the City of Lansing. And for the Oprah, it was hard to watch that slideshow and not think, not see gentrification. We want to bring in young professionals. We want to build a different city, is what it sounds like. And I would much rather us try to build a city for the people who are here, rather than just, you know, build a city to appease whatever this is.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, Z-two twenty-two.
Development and planning.
Number three, I'm sorry, items eight, Z-three of twenty-two.
Development and planning.
Item nine, the pilot for North multifamily lots.
Development and planning.
Lot lots. Number ten, Stadium North Senior Lofts.
Development and planning.
Number eleven, payment in lieu of taxes for Hillsdale Place.
Development and planning.
And number twelve, the Oprah for Summit Street Development.
Development and planning.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-six point zero-two of the Code of Ordinances. Z-one twenty-two, one oh-nine East Randolph Street, from R-six-A Urban Detached Residential to R-A-R Residential Adaptive Use, as read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is a, and I apologize, earlier I said that that was a motion for rezoning. It wasn't. It was an Oprah. So I do apologize for that misspeak. But what we do have before us now is a rezoning from R-six-A Urban Detached Residential to R-dash-A-R Residential Adaptive Use. And this is for one oh-nine East Randolph. What it is now is it is a seventeen, I'm sorry, yes, it's a sixteen-bed convent. And Mr. Hicks, the developer, wants to turn it into a residential, a residential facility for the elderly. They, it's going to be seventeen- They, it's going to be 17 beds, but the application says they're asking for 20. And the reason why they're saying, why they're asking for 20 is that there are different categories for licenses. And the third category is 13 through 20. And so, they ask for 20, but they'll only have 16 beds. Let's see. Along with this is a variance for parking. There is very little parking. And so, they're also going to be using the street for parking and working out a deal with the Catholic Church that this facility is adjacent to, to utilize some of their parking spaces, particularly during bad weather. One of the concerns that we had was if your employees and visitors are parking on the street, what happens if there is bad weather and the road has to be plowed? And they did say that they are talking to the adjacent church there to get some spaces for parking. I think they did have notices go out for the hearing. There were no comments against this rezon in the neighborhood. And with that, I'll move the resolution in the ordinance for passage.
All right. So, the ordinance has been moved. Is there further discussion? Vice President Wood.
A concern of mine that has been for some time is that an applicant can be anyone who has a vested interest in the property that can apply for a rezoning. The problem is that we've all sat here at one time or another having someone come before us with a great idea, with lots of promises on what was going to happen and what would be developed there, only to have had that property then not be sold to them and the rezoning already then taking place. And once that takes place, it doesn't come back to us with another applicant. What happens is that anything that is in that zoning classification then can go there. So, and again, I, you know, we've checked, they do have a vested interest because they have a, a, they have not purchased it yet, but they have a contract to purchase it. So, and the fact that the only person that can add conditions to a rezoning is the applicant. We cannot say to the applicant, "Okay, under conditional zoning, if you don't purchase this, this would revert back." We can't say that. The applicant could, but we can't. And we can't even request them to do it. So, I am reluctant to approve this rezoning because of that. And will be reluctant in the future on other zonings because of that. And so, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can appreciate that and I agree with that. So, if we can't ask, if we in committee can't ask the applicant, "Would you consider a conditional zoning, a conditional zone?", then how do we get the message to them to, so if we vote this down, how do we get the message to him to come back and ask for a conditional zoning? Jim? The question is-
Could you, and I'm sorry, I was-
No, it's okay. You're fine.
I was bothering him. I needed a question answered.
The question is, if we in committee can't ask the applicant, "Would you consider a conditional zone, zoning?", would you consider conditional zoning? I apologize. My, how do we get the message? If we vote this down, how do we get the message to the applicant that he should come back and request a conditional zoning?
It has to be, you go to the administration and let them talk to the developer because the conditional rezoning has to be requested by the applicant.
Okay. So, if we vote this down today, then that's a message to the administration to go back to the applicant and ask them, would they consider a conditional zone? Because I agree with you on this. I'm just trying to figure out how we do it.
Yeah, I mean, the rule is you can't condition it yourself as a legislative body. But if the applicant comes in and requests a conditional rezoning, that makes it legal.
Can we ask him, my question, can we ask him in committee, "Would you consider a conditional zone"? Can we ask him that in committee?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with asking him that question, but he's going to have to request it.
Okay. So, my thing is in the future, whoever's on development and planning, I think that needs to be a question that we ask folks if we have a concern about it. I mean, if we can ask the question, they either, you know, yea or nay. So, but I agree with you. I have no problem with voting this down so that he can come back with a conditional zone.
All right. Are there other, I'm sorry, are there further questions, comments? And I would agree. And I can speak specifically to Southwest Lansing, but there are a number of developments, a number of businesses, et cetera, in Southwest Lansing that Southwest Lansing didn't necessarily bargain for when a rezon was approved. But unfortunately, again, the rezon runs with the property, not the applicant. And when you have, as an example, a purchase agreement that is conditional, I should say contingent on a number of issues, any one of those issues can become a problem. The purchase agreement falls, you know, falls away. And then you have this, in perpetuity, this new zoning category, which allows for a whole host of things. And I know that each and every one of us really values the process of public input. But the reality is when we notice these and then we ask for public input, we're asking for public input a lot of times on the development that is being proposed. And so, I appreciate the line of questioning, Vice President Wood. With that being said, Clerk Swope, I believe, we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Brown.
No.
Councilmember Daniels. One yea, six nays. The ordinance is not adopted. So, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
I'd like to move item 14 off the consent agenda. This is a special land use for that particular property.
All right.
And if we could handle that first.
Okay. So, we are going to take up issue number 14, SLU, for 109 East Randolph Street. Councilwoman Spitzley. Just move it.
Yeah, I move that. Yes. I apologize.
All right. Nope, it's all good. So, the item has been moved. This is a special land use for the subject property we just discussed in terms of the rezon. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Aye.
I messed up.
So, ayes and no.
Yeah, can we do that again, please? I need, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I know what, I know. I just messed up.
So, a yes vote is yes on the special land use, right? And a no vote is no on the special land use. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying aye. Aye.
Okay. Got it. The resolution is not adopted. So, we are to the remainder of the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. The consent agenda includes an appointment for Katie Alexander as an at-large member of the planning board for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. An appointment of, I'm sorry, I said appointment. It was a reappointment. A reappointment for Teresa Stokes as the business owner member of the South Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor Improvement Board of Directors for a term to expire July 30th, 2026. The social district amendment to include the Lansing Hotel Investment LLC. A claim appeal for Joan Brooks for $370. And this was granted in committee. And then the last is to set a public hearing for a make-safed demolition for the property located at 2422 Lowcroft. This is a fire-damaged property and the public hearing would be September 26th. So, with that, I would move those resolutions.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we're to resolutions for action. We have the appointment of Tamara Carter to the DLI Board.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Ms. Carter. Come on down. Ms. Carter is a branch manager. She's been the branch manager at Lake Trust Credit Union for several years and is very interested in downtown and making downtown great. One of the stories she told us is that she didn't think she'd be here for this long. And so, she just came down to work for Lake Trust and then here she is and all of a sudden, she's a branch manager. She's very active in her church and she's very active in the downtown and sees the needs and also the opportunities at the revitalization of the downtown. Let's see. We're excited to have her here. Again, she grew up in Grand Rapids, but now she's here and she calls Lansing her home. And with that, I will move the resolution.
All right. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries and congratulations.
And I'm sorry, this is for business representative member of the Downtown Lansing, Inc., I'm struggling, board for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. I'm struggling. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of- Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board Member. According to the best of my ability.
All right. Congratulations. That takes us to item number 21. This is a claim appeal, claim number 1894 for Paul Kai and the amount of $600, I'm sorry, $610 in trash fees at 5736 Laporte Drive. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just trying to get my notes together here. Okay, so, this is, again, as I said earlier, this is a claim appeal for trash removal. This was a couch that was on their curb. They were given notice on December 1st, 2021. And, yeah, December 1st, 2021. And they, there's, as you can see, the couch right there. The applicant requesting the appeal came to our committee. They acknowledged that that was their couch, but there's a language barrier and they didn't really understand what the situation was. And so, they came to committee requesting an appeal. This went before the Claims Review Committee and they upheld, they denied her appeal and upheld the charge. I will move this resolution and then I would like to have a comment on this. So, with that, I will move the resolution. The Committee on Government Operations denied their claim for appeal. They found that all the notices were appropriate and that they did receive proper notice. And with that, I will move the resolution.
So, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This troubles me. And I'm going to tell you that it troubles me tremendously. It troubles me because, first of all, there's a language barrier. It troubles me, second of all, because they were charged $660 to remove a couch. It troubles me because had we taken another moment, we could have called Public Services or our own city trash and had it removed for $35. So, my concern is that while it may not have been their job to tell the residents that there was a better way, I am concerned that, you know, we could have put a tag on there and had, and called Public Service, our own department, and had them pick that couch up for $35. And so, I can't in good conscience support this because we could have done better here. And as a city government, I think that we are obligated to do better. Just because we can charge it doesn't mean we should charge it. And, you know, we could have picked up the phone and had our Public Services Department come and pick this up for $35. So, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Are there further comments or questions? Yeah, so I think the situation is ripe for amended policy, as an example, amended process. We, typically, when we take a look at these issues in city operations, I mean, there are copious amounts of trash. There are, I mean, tons of debris. You know, it's almost unbelievable in terms of what you're seeing. Yeah, and so, we certainly understand our process, our process playing out. That's why, you know, honestly, 95% of the appeals that come before city operations in this body are denied. This, however, when you have one or two bulk items that are left at the curb, I would think that we, and Mayor Shore, I'm kind of looking to you. I would think we could have some interdepartmental communication. I think we could certainly, as an example, you know, take advantage of, or at least try, right, to take advantage of, of the bulk item sticker, or process, I should say. There's no longer a sticker. But in any event, if, you know, if they at that point don't avail themselves to that, then obviously, we need to move forward with our process. But I don't know if it's a tag. I don't know if it's in the letter with regards to bulk items. But there needs to be some type of education, I would think. Because 600 and, you know, plus dollars for one couch is a problem, certainly. So, there's a motion on the floor. I'm not seeing any other conversation or discussion. All right, Mayor Shore.
I just want to point out, a hang tag goes on every door. A hang tag does go on every door. The person can then call.
And I think, I guess what we're asking is, you know, take a look at the hang tag. And if there is somewhere on there that says, you know, here's a program in place for bulk items, just so that we're specific.
There's a phone number for them to call and then you can discuss it. They're noticed.
And that's kind of a catch-all, right? Just if you have questions regarding the process.
Absolutely. They would absolutely say that when the call-
All right. We got a couple, couple of questions or comments. First, Councilman Brown and then Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, President Hussein. And to Councilwoman Spitzley's point, if there's a language barrier, I don't know what those look like or if we have interpretive services available. If that's identified on those documents, if you have someone who maybe can't, you know, read English or something like that, then that would hinder or provide a barrier.
We certainly do direct through 311. I mean, we don't have every different language put on the tag that we hang, but somebody who calls 311, we absolutely do have language assistance.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I agree and I sympathize with that. I think that, again, I agree with, as Councilmember Hussein, as President Hussein said, you know, 90% of the appeals that come through are denied. However, I, you know, I understand that there's a door tag. I do. And I understand that there's the opportunity to call. But there's also an opportunity for our code enforcement to exercise a little discretion with a single couch. And, you know, and so, you know, we're here to serve and we're government and that's our job is to serve. And so, I, the door hangs are great and I'm glad that those are there because I think that, you know, if you don't avail yourself of that, that's on you. I get that. But I also think that there, there has to be, I think, a little bit of discretion and a single couch on the curb where, you know, you can put it in, you know, whatever database and have them come and pick it up for $35 versus calling a waste hauler for $660. I think that we need to look at that. So, I agree with what you're saying and I think, and the door hangers are effective. But I think there needs to be a little bit more discretion on, particularly on a bulk item like that.
All right. Further questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion does not carry.
Okay, we are to claim 1901 for trash fees on Hillsdale.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a claim for $2,215 for 1017 Hillsdale Street. This did go before the Claims Review Committee and they denied his request for an appeal. This incident was, occurred on March 21st, 2022 and it was reached, I'm sorry, the incident date was March 1st, 2021, 2022. It was rechecked on March 9th, 2022 and the contractor was on site on March 21st, 2022. And so there was ample notice, there was ample time in between the notice where the homeowner could have called and asked for extra time or asked for consideration. That did not happen. It went to the Claims Review Committee on March 17th, 2022. And it's not remain about the red tag. And so with that, I would move the resolution to deny the claim, the amount of, to deny the appeal claim in the amount of $2,215.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor to deny the claim in the amount of $2,215. Is there further questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
And we have claim 1910 for trash fees on Chicago Ave.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a claim appeal for $9,440 in trash fees at 735 Chicago Avenue. This claim was initially cited in January 14th of 2022, but because of weather delays, it was, weather issues, it was delayed and the claim was basically retracted. It was reissued March 30th, 2022. So at the time, January 14th, the tenant, he was a tenant at the time of the house, he was put on notice that he had the trash issues. Subsequent to that, he purchased the property through a quitclaim deed and the property became his and he was recited again on March 30th, I'm sorry, yep, March 30th, 2022. Again, he was properly noticed, had opportunity to correct the situation. He did comment that he had been in the hospital for a couple of weeks, but that he did know about this issue. And so we felt that he had proper notice and that all the, you know, process had been followed. And so during committee, his claim was denied. And with that, I would move the resolution to deny his claim.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Yep, to deny in full. Is there further discussion, questions? Yeah, I mean, from the testimony, I was in the committee meeting, from the testimony and the pictures, it almost seemed as if maybe this was a dump site for a personal business. So, yeah, so with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Our motion carries.
And we have claim 1916 for trash fees on Robertson Street.
For the last time tonight, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a claim appeal number 1916, the estate of Irene McKay, for $3,272 in trash fees at 1351 Robertson Street. So what this, this was, this was kind of an interesting incident. The person who owns the property has been deceased for a number of years and the grandmother, I think, lives there on the property right now, but the attorney who represents the estate was here. The incident date cited was November 9th, 2021. They received a letter regarding the trash on November 16th, 2021. The trash contractor was on property at, on December 6th, 2021. So they had almost a month to address the trash and the incident in their yard. Let's see. So they did have proper notice, they had opportunity to address the situation and they did not. One of the things that the attorney for the estate did mention was his concern that there were a number of empty barrels in the trailer which kind of skewed the amount of trash or cubic yards of trash that there actually was. And so we looked at that and did some, I didn't do the math, I think Sheri Boak did and President Hussein, did some quick math and determined that it was approximately seven yards, the seven cubic yards that the empty trash barrels took up. And so based on that, we awarded a partial award of $238 and denied the balance of $3,034. And with that, I would move the resolution to deny the claim in the amount of $3,034.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to reports of, I'm sorry, we're to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. This is your final opportunity to sign up in the next minute or so on the yellow sheet in the back with Jason. And in the meantime, we are to reports of officers, boards and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move that all items be considered being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have from the Clerk, Minutes of Boards and Commissions.
Place on file.
From President Hussein, Council Rule 47 addition.
City Operations.
Items from the mayor, two items related to mending Chapter 130 marijuana operations.
Committee of the whole.
We have a slew of traffic control orders to regulate parking in Old Town.
Traffic, I'm sorry, City Operations.
We have the reappointment of John Shosky to the Airport Authority Board.
City Operations.
Grant acceptance for the Ingham County Parks and Trails Millage.
Ways and Means.
Fee change Parks and Recreation Department.
Ways and Means.
Grant acceptance Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund for pathways and park improvements.
Ways and Means.
Workers' compensation settlement.
Ways and Means.
And we have setting the show cause and potentially doing the order for make safer demolish at 2026 West Jolly Road.
Public safety.
And donation acceptance Hispanic Heritage Month events.
Ways and Means.
Okay, we have communications and petitions, response from House Democratic Leader Lesinski in support of the council resolution urging the repeal of the 1931 abortion ban.
Place on file.
The Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting Notice.
Place on file.
Claim Appeal number 1891, Tom Buffett, for trash fees on Christensen.
City Operations.
And we have several notices from the Liquor Control Commission. One is for Class C for Leo's outpost at 600 South Pennsylvania. One is for H&amp;M Convenience Store for SDM and SDD license at 1830 West Saginaw. And the other is for BS Liquor to transfer ownership at the location at 1701 West Willow.
All three will be referred to City Operations.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Wood.
I would move to excuse Councilmember Garza from this evening's meeting.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Right, you deserve to do that, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Remarks by council members.
Do we have any remarks tonight? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Just one. I forgot to mention that we are having our Mexican Independence Day celebration on September 16th from 11:00 to 1:00 at City Hall. We also have the Mobile Food Pantry this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at Tabernacle of David. And while I'm at it, I will apologize to everybody here. In two weeks, I will not be attending the city council meeting. That is the evening of Rosh Hashanah and I will be honoring that religious tradition that evening, so I will not be here, but we will have staff here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment on legislative matters. First speaker is Belinda Fitzpatrick, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar. And again, folks have up to three minutes to address topics related to the operation or governance of the city of Lansing.
Well, this is definitely like a quality of life issue in the city of Lansing. I've been concerned about the lack of pre-deprivation due process for a long time. He needs to start the thing, the timer. Okay, now, I never expected to get this much press coverage. The whole front page and then I got a second one too, okay? Thank you. Well, you know, it does seem like unusual, they have 27 chickens in the city, but I was raising babies. And then the other ones were miniatures and I was hoping to not wear my shirt anymore about missing my chickens, but there were six, they said, died. And my TapTap was not there. Tap's like my best friend on earth and I gotta get back and ask them to take a second look. But here it said, the county says it acted to save the chickens. This is so illogical, thank you, that they take, they, okay, they take TapTap. And I told the prosecutor, I said, it's cold, it's gonna get cold, he can't be out of the cold. I swear, I bet you he froze to death. I wonder what the jury would have thought if they, and the jury acquitted me, they found me not guilty. But I wonder what the jury would have thought if they knew that six of the chickens that Animal Control took to supposedly protect were, died in their custody. And I believe they died from criminal neglect. I was told that three died from natural causes, three died from predators. There was no excuse to take my chickens and put them out where they were threatened by predators. And I'm still investigating, I gotta try to find the date of death of Tap. But, you know, my endocrinologist documented that he was medical support. And there is a law that says that, I mean, the prosecutor is supposed to go after people if they interfere with a medical support animal, but is the prosecutor of Ingham County gonna go after Ingham County? Well, I just went through a year of hell. My mother just went through a year of hell and stress and this is gonna be on the law in courts at the county on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Shannon Norris.
Farhan here again. This is a message mostly to Lansing residents, Lansing voters. As you guys all know, the mayor wants to ask all of you to pass a proposal that's gonna be on this November's ballot where he wants to increase your property tax so that he and the rest of you guys can have a nice facility while Lansing residents are living in places where they don't have smoke detectors, where there's wires everywhere. And so I just really want to know what makes you guys more important than Lansing residents? Why should you get a new roof when we have people outside that don't even have a roof? This building works just fine. Yes, the cost of living, the cost to maintain it might be a lot, but guess what? Rent has been out of control in this city. You don't see us asking for a tax, you don't see us asking for relief or help. The money that came from the federal government that was for the people who are struggling in this city, you gave it to the police. You gave them 1.9 million, which includes an athletic league, a league, a basketball league, whatever it is. That's not what the money is for. And then now you want to come back to us after you've used $50 million and you want to increase our property tax. For what? Why should you get a new roof? Why? Why should the judges get a new roof? Why should the police lockup place get a new roof? Y'all don't deserve a new roof. As long as this building is working and it's safe, which it is safe because I guess it passes inspections every year, unlike some of these other properties that people are living in, it's time to put people first. Stop thinking about yourselves. Stop doing that. You guys all live in nice houses, all of you do. And it's not to take credit away from you guys, but don't ask Lansing residents to increase their property tax when you haven't done anything to help us, to put the people first. Come on, Mr. Mayor, do better. There are people dying in this city. A toddler died in this city a month ago because the place where he was living wasn't licensed. He didn't have smoke detectors. How many more people need to die before you take action? Go to these houses. You don't even have to listen to me. Go to these houses, go see it for yourself. These are the same people that you're asking to increase their property tax. Go see how they're living. Go do that. Then maybe you can relate to them. Do better. People are dying in this city. Lives are at stake. It's not even a joke.
Thank you. Next, we have Shannon Norris, followed by John Moran.
Hello, Shannon Norris. I live in Ward 4. First, I wanted to say to Mr. Brown, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Hussein and Ms. Wood, thank you very much for the questions that you asked of the first group of developers there that want to partner, co-develop with LHC. It's disgusting to even think about giving them management over more homes in Lansing. It's so disgusting. Lansing Housing Commission, for years, has left people in houses with everything from, they've lived there for 22 years and never had a fresh coat of paint, ever, because they're not worth it for some reason, to holes in their roofs. Photographs have them. Boards over windows that the Lansing Housing Commission manages, these scattered houses. You know it's not right. Ms. Spitzley, I heard you say that you, you're here to serve and it still bothers me how you stood up at the Lansing Housing Commission and told the board members that they needed to do what was really hard, even though the public was just making it so hard, they needed to make that decision anyway. And they did. Ms. Hall, she caved. But I'm just wondering why you were there. I'm still wondering why you're there and I'm gonna keep bringing it up until I guess I get my answer. Why were you there as a city council member telling those people to go ahead and vote that hard decision when they were staring at 20 people who said, please don't? Who represented 200 people? I don't get it. So if you're here to serve, who you serving? City Council, I beg you, please start knocking doors with us. City Council, I beg you, please, start knocking doors with us. We go on Monday nights and Wednesday nights. We are bound and determined to speak to all residents that live in Lansing Housing Commission houses. It's evident that people have been lying about work orders. It's evident that they still want to keep building things here in Lansing. And the thought that they could be allowed to, when the evidence, the data says otherwise, well, that would be criminal. That would be criminal. And I really hope that some of you can grow a heart, get some empathy, form some compassion, do some work, like, out on the streets with the poorest of the poor. You're all welcome at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Moran, followed by Charlotte Burnett.
The last time I was here, I spoke about when my house got shot up and the officer showed up. When he showed up, he didn't ask me how I, how I was, if I was injured, anything like that. First thing he said out of his mouth was, "I heard you're an activist." I'm not an activist. I've never done anything. I'm a human being. The only time I can think of, anytime I might have confronted a cop in any manner would have been when I come across three of them attacking an unconscious black man in the car wash parking lot. Three uniformed, white, LPD cops. I confronted them because they were attacking somebody that was unconscious. They turned around and confronted me. I backed away. Stood around long enough to make sure help came. After that, I never received any police protection of any way, shape, or form. Numerous break-ins, shooting, never solved anything. Even when we knew who it was that did it, never even investigated. So there's quite a bit I need to talk about. And not only just for me, but if they lied on me, I'm sure they lied on other people, too. If you don't confront people that lie, especially people that you depend on to tell the truth, then you don't have much of a society. That's all I got to say for today. Other than that, I hope everybody stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlotte Burnett, followed by Don Dean.
President, councilpersons, thank you for having me. I'm here at request to talk about my resignation to the Human Relations and Community Services Board on September 2nd. And I'm gonna try to condense this into a three-minute speech, which it took four pages to write, and so I just went ahead and put some things together. It has come to my attention quite recently, actually, that the HRCS department has had some issues regarding the last director and misappropriation of funds, which led to 153-page audit in 2020, and criminal charges of the former director. I have a PhD in governance, and specifically, I know that removing one person from a department is not gonna solve issues pertaining to corruption or nepotism. One issue that had me resign, among many, was the fact that we were not meeting regularly, despite it was required in our charter, and that councilperson Brown had pushed so hard to make sure that we were meeting every month. When I asked why we weren't meeting every month, I was told that it was because there was no one to fill the seats, and that there were a lot of empty seats, despite I had applied in 2019. Another issue was the fact that the HRCS grant, the process, they didn't provide us with any of the governance documents of the organizations that had applied, despite our role being to make sure that there was no issues that we had had, like we had prior to 2020. In fact, when we did grade these applications, they were then sent to the HRCS staff to be graded, before being graded by the mayor. We requested to see those grades and were denied. We also felt very disempowered in the fact that Director Coleman and staff ignored motions that we passed in the advisory committee, including requesting a city council member be present at our July meeting. We also asked that we have Doug Flemings from the LHC board come and participate in questioning, for which the Director Coleman and her staff ignored. We were told in writing that we were not allowed to investigate the LHC sale of the scattered sites, despite 70% of the houses in the LHC study being in disrepair, and many of which were red and pink taped, causing a direct threat to our citizens. No city council member ever came to our meetings despite our requests. And then we also felt like all of our requests were circumvented to the mayor. There were also issues pertaining to intimidation. Jody Washington, who was talking to a nonprofit leader about the nepotism in the past, and how we need to create a stronger board for the future, and was later called down to the mayor's office and told not to do that. I also know that HRCS awards have been withheld from the Emoja House, the Fledge Foundation, and Opportunity Knox. And this is not the first time that the city has used grants to punish leadership in a nonprofit, the Village being one of them. I request that you please investigate the HRCS in full, including its director, as well as move toward a city management legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Don Dean, followed by Larry Hutchinson.
Thank you, Don Dean, North Side, East Side. So I wanted to talk about that, the grant, I just noticed it, but I wanted to talk about the grant acceptance for trails and stuff like that for parks. And back in the, back in the winter, I was at one of the park board meetings, talking about the lights were taken out without the board knowing or anything like that. And Bancroft has a lot of trails. However, there, there's a lot of fallen, fallen timber, and, and there's a fence that's been there since I was knee-high to a grasshopper, that's embedded in the ground. And I'm 53, so it's been there for a long time. Bancroft needs some maintenance. There was no budget for Bancroft in that park board meeting. And then you, not you, but Lepfa has the audacity to say that they want to put a driving range in our field. There are hundreds of people, probably even thousands of people, that use that park every week to walk their dogs, to play with their dogs, to play with their children. And I'm here as the vice president of the Friends of Bancroft Park to say, "We need maintenance in that park. We don't need a driving range." Okay, we, we, we need, we need some help with, with maintenance in that park. Like I said, it's been neglected for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Larry Hutchinson, followed by Michael Mercer.
Odu Blahimine Shaitana Rajin, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Mr. President, Honorable Counsel, Mayor's Office, City Attorney's Office, Clerk's Office, I'm gonna get to you in a minute, sir. I rise and extend to myself as much time as I may consume to extend and revise my mark. I'm Larry Hutchinson, Green Party nominee for Secretary of State. Now, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, I have gained appreciation for what you do. Because every day, I get another, another ton of letters. And this is, this one's from Ms. Barb, our county clerk. And I'm sure she has some very choice words for me, but we'll get along with that. Local media, public service, public safety. Residents of Lansing, Michigan, the great and beautiful city of Lansing, Michigan. Now, when you go to Detroit and a couple of other of these cities, you gain an appreciation when you come home. This is just a different type of thing. Ms. Woods, you're looking beautiful. We're matching today. Let's talk about the fly. From the Holy Quran, it talks about, "A man cannot create anything, not even a fly." And if he did create a fly, it would take what he created and fly away. Now, this, this campaign thing, let me tell you something. It's taken on a whole life of itself! I'm telling you, I can pull out that bag, tons of this stuff right here. Mr. Jackson, I hope you're doing well with your campaign for judge. I understand you're going on to lawfully other pursuits. Now, this woman right here is being unjustly hailed in Russia. Her name's Brittany. Brittany Griner, basketball player, female basketball player. And as I understand it, LeBron James is making more than the whole woman basketball team! Free Brittany, free Larry Hoover.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Mercer, followed by Dwight Washington.
Karen, I'd like to talk about something that councilmember Brian Jeffries brought up back in the past, when he was a large councilmember, and you were here at the time. Do you remember when he mentioned he would like to make that wall back there, the Wall of Fame, of all the Lansing residents who came down here to speak their mind? And here, it hasn't yet been put up back there, and I think it should get put up. And the reason why it wasn't put up is probably because back during those days, when Brian brought it up, was because we had Benaro, his three councilwomen, and we had the cousins on council who would not have approved that to have gone through. But now that we have new councilmembers and new mayor, could you please get that started to put those, you know, pictures of those regulars who came down here to speak their mind? If you remember back during the days, we had Lloyd Teetz that came down here, who spoke his mind. He hollered and yelled to get, you know, people on council to quiet and not talk to each other, pay attention to what he's saying. Had Ed Zimmer, I remember Ed coming down here during that Wolverine Pipeline down there in Blackman Township. He came here talking about when he went down there, he does not want that pipeline running against, alongside 96 on the South Side, where he happened to have lived. And John Darnell, Charlene, and all were standing, you know, agreeing with what he was saying. And John saved, you know, the city residents millions of dollars. I remember they wanted to build a brand-new high school in the north side of town. And I remember Christine Timmons, she had her talk show, Jewels of Knowledge. And Benaro did not appreciate, you know, her talking down here about the government, you know, how he is in government, is Ingham County Commissioner, a state rep, and now, you know, at that time, the mayor of Lansing. And I remember, too, Curtis X., he was down here, who brought his books down here. And I think all those, you know, Lansing citizens, those pictures should be put up back there, like councilmember Brian Jeffries mentioned. I don't understand why if you can't do it for them, why can't you name councilmembers and mayors, such as Sandy Allen, at what you mentioned, Council President Hussein, or at the Melfry Smith Community Center on the South Side? We've got the Hollister Building we're in right now. We have Tony Benavides, who was a councilmember, third ward, I believe, if I remember right, during the time when, you know, Hollister was mayor, and then he became the mayor of Lansing. And the, you know, you guys are, all these here people, why can't you, the citizens of Lansing, you came down to speak their mind? And like, I say, they are not ever going to be forgotten, these people. So put those pictures up, like councilmember Brian Jeffries said, Carol. You remember that, or don't you?
Thank you. Next, we have Dwight Washington, followed by Kyle Richard.
Good evening, Dwight Washington, Bath Township. And I'm here today to echo some of the comments made by the Vice President of Bancroft Parks. And I myself have a doctorate in Parks and Recreation, and I've been here in the past to speak on the value of parks. And I, not really sure why I'm here tonight, to go over some of the same issues that I've brought up before, but I do love Lansing, and I love Lansing's parks. And during this pandemic, one of the things that I did, because I couldn't travel, go elsewhere, was like, really got to know the Lansing area parks. And one of my friends and I really, like, made a list of the best parks in the greater Lansing area. And Bancroft Park was one of the top five in both of our lists, and that's really an accomplishment for a city park, when the other ones were county parks. And to hear that there's interest in developing a driving range on Bancroft Park is really disheartening, because one of the things that parks provide people is a place to have community. New research is showing that parks improve the quality of life and the health of people. And to have something that is gonna be, that's such a rich natural gem for our city is, is really discouraging. And it's also, it's, it's a matter of equity, when you begin to look at, like, how many natural forested, old-growth areas are actually within the Lansing areas, there's not very many. And when we think about the golf courses, how they're not really accessible for all the people, but only a select group of people who have clubs, who have the money to pay for that golf course, it really becomes a question of inequity and injustice. And I, and I really hope that the council will keep that in mind, is that the people of Lansing, the beautiful people of Lansing, who have gone through and prospered in an industrial era, and who are making their way through this new era of climate change and climate uncertainty, if you don't have these green spaces where people can go to exercise, to find healthy, clean air, we're putting them at risk, and that's really unacceptable. One of the things that you've talked about that's on the table is, is housing. And housing, as we know, is a critical feature for people's quality of life. And another critical feature is parks. It's considered a social determinant of health. And when we begin to take away these social determinants of health, we're taking away the quality of life, and we're, we're putting people at risk for a better, healthy lifestyle that's gonna cost us and our, our medical industry more money. And so with that being said, I would just, again, like to thank you all for your support of Bancroft Park, and encourage you to, to remember the people, and remember that there are golf courses other places, and people who have money can travel and will do that. People who don't have money need to be able to get half-access to something that's close by. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Kyle Richard, and then Loretta Stanaway.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. On the paper I wrote, what my topic was, was words and systems. At the end of my last comment, I said, kind of reference to whatever, appease whatever's happening here. And I think words are important, we gotta be clear with how we communicate. When I say what's happening here, what I'm talking about is the perpetuation of systems. I think some, and sometimes it's big, and sometimes it's small. You know, sometimes it's the pilots and the Oprahs, right? Sometimes it's when I'm driving down Michigan Avenue, and on the left, there's a fancy new Meyer Hotel apartment building with a outdoor live music event, and on the right, there's the Mission with people in the street. So, and I, I do appreciate, like, it was nice to see this council today do things that I haven't seen y'all do before. And I understand, breaking systems on an individual level is nearly impossible, but we can, we do have the power within ourselves of what we do in our lives, and the words that we say, and the actions that we take. Sometimes it's small, though. Sometimes the perpetuation of systems can go unlooked. One very small thing that I noticed in the agenda today with regard to items, it was items 28 and 29, marijuana, M-A-R-I-H-U-A-N-A. items 28 and 29, marijuana, M-A-R-I-H-U-A-N-A. What in the Anglo-Saxon is that? Like, words come from places. You know, it's not, you know, it's not Mary Hay. You know, there's a J there for reasons, Tijuana, right? Not Tiahana. It's not marijuana. And so it's like, it's the erasure that happens, not just like at a language level, but also at a people level, where when I'm driving down Michigan Avenue, just turn your neck. Just turn your neck the other way. You don't have to see it. Just turn your neck. And I don't know. And then, you know, I scroll on Facebook and I find out that, you know, Mayor Andy Shore had crazy crab for lunch, you know, wants everyone to know that there's construction on Waverly, but you can still get in there. Hurrah! Hurrah! Let's support those local businesses. Like, people are in the street, and I'm glad you had a good lunch, but like, let's use our position for something. Because to say Mayor Shore is a force for good in this city is to tell a lie, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Loretta Stanaway.
Okay. To go back to a few of the earlier subjects about pilots and such, Oprahs and whatever, if my memory serves me correctly, 700 May Street was, at one time, an LPD precinct. And it was vacated, if I remember correctly, because it was in horrible condition. It had been let go, had not been kept up, had not been maintained. There were problems with leaks and walls falling down and rats and mice and you name it. And this is the person that you want to turn over an Oprah to? Somebody who could not maintain a police precinct in a safe manner? And if you read through the wording for the application, you're going to find some shadows of Virgil coming out here. Virgil's cool, creative class. There's a quote in there. It says, "This building is for forward-thinking young workers," end of quote. And the next quote is, "It's for conscious young people." Well, I hope they're not unconscious. That wouldn't be too helpful, would it? They claimed that there would not be any loss of school or state education funds, but if you look at that application, there's a box checked that gives the state the option to give them six years of a half reduction on their school and state educational fund In the 28 existing pilots, you've said that there was roughly $2.7 million per year being lost to the taxpayers. And Carol had mentioned that over 30 years, it averaged out to about $94 million of lost income. $2.7 million a year is equivalent to 18 police officers. So every year for the next 30 years, we could be gaining 18 additional police officers. The proposed Board of Water and Light increases, average from what I gathered from what our chair said, would be about $18.50 a month additional. We cannot stand these continual increases in costs and these continual losses of public services to provide for private profit. Put an end to it, please.
Thank you.
All right. And with no other business for the body, we are adjourned at 9:38.